Good evening. This time I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Wallingford Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission to order. The time is 7:00 PM and we are at the Parisi Council Chambers in Wallingford. Please join me who have pledged allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role call. Ally?
Ellen Keane.
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
David Parent.
Deborah Phillips.
Robert Simon.
Erin O'Hair, environmental planner.
We'll go on to consideration of the minutes of the February 6th meeting. Is there any comments, corrections, amendments to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of February 6th, 2019 be approved.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, going on to old business. Application A 14-7.2, 195 Chimney Hill Road, Sunwood Development Request for Bond Release.
That's not ready to go forward and of course now we have the snow sunk. It's gonna have to wait.
Okay.
It's gonna have to wait till they plant seed.
All right. Going on to item two, Application A 19-1.1, 15 Windswept Hill Road, Paradise Vineyard and Winery.
I think they're in the wrong room. They're supposed to be upstairs for tax review. Tax appeal. Maybe they're students.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, my name is Christopher Giuliano, licensed land surveyor and professional engineer with the firm of Giuliano Associates. I maintain an office at 405 Main Street in the Alesville section of town. Last month's meeting, I gave everyone an overview of the project for Paradise Vineyard and Winery. Basically, they're looking to do a expansion of the winery portion. They're going to be doing a building expansion for the production. They're adding a patio for their customers and they're gonna have a semi-permanent tent also there as part of the expansion. They are formalizing the parking area and that being the reason why we are here is because of the increase in surfaced area. So, like I said, last month I kinda went through the plans. I can go back through them if there are any questions. Okay.
Chris, why don't you go up there? You can point out what's going on.
All right, I'd be happy to. So, I know everyone is familiar with the property, but just to kinda give you an overview, at the end of Windswept Hill Road, at the cul-de-sac, there's a driveway entrance for the winery facility. Basically, the driveway accesses both Albert Ruggiero's property and Richard Ruggiero's property and we're mainly just talking about Richard's property where the main building and activities take place. So, existing conditions, basically driveway comes up through the properties. There's some parking actually on Albert's property and the formal parking lot in the rear. And one of the main reasons besides the expansion that sparked this, basically to consolidate all the activities onto one property and not being overlapped between the two properties. So... So, as we come in off of Windswept Hill Road, we're gonna be basically formalizing the driveway entrance and that's more of a planning and zoning requirement. They want a full 24-foot wide so that there's no issue with emergency vehicles. So, since we're complying with width, we're also gonna be smoothing out the driveway a little bit. They do have a few items within the right-of-way when we be pulling those back onto private property. Just basically some housekeeping things that planning and zoning wanted. And as soon as we get out of the 50-foot accessway, the driveway goes from being paved 24 feet, tapers down, back down to 20 feet, and that's where we start to transition also from pavement to gravel. And since we're in the watershed protection district, basically we will be using gravel for all surfaces beyond the formal driveway entrance. So, again, the driveway comes in, wraps around vineyards. We have, start with a little bus parking and then some customer parking before we get to the vineyard, the winery building. And actually, as I said earlier, existing winery building, they're putting on a 20-by-80 addition, which is basically gonna be for all for production of the wines. They're basically, right here currently is a grass area, they're gonna put a formalized patio and then they're gonna have a temporary seasonal tent area off to the side. So, that's as far as the building goes and what they're adding. So, addition, patio, and tent. And then, as I mentioned earlier, they're formalizing the parking area, two formal bus parking spaces here, formalizing some of their customer parking in between the two areas of vineyard. And then, in the back area, a formalized parking area that's gonna have defined spaces a little bit more manageable as far as circulation. And basically, as I stated just prior, we're actually taking all the gravel and parking area off of 12 Windswept and keeping everything on 15 Windswept. There's very minor grading. I know Ms. O'Hair had mentioned about cutting into the hill. We're actually not going into the hill, we're actually pulling some, you know, away from the hill and actually removing some gravel along this side. Towards the south, we're basically in the flat area. So, there's really no grade change here and we are over 154 feet away from the wetlands on the other, on Albert Ruggiero's property for 12 Windswept. So, the main reason for us being here is the increase in surfaced area. Existing additions has us at 33,530 square feet and with these additions, we'll be jumping up to 77,317. So, about 14,000 square feet of new gravel building to go along with the site. If there's any questions about what I went through, I know it was rather quick, but there's not a lot going on here from a wetland standpoint.
As I recall, your issue is the runoff from the parking area heading to the wetlands?
Yes. And one of the concerns that Erin had is, and we had a site walk back in November that I attended, that runoff comes through the property and actually ends up in the wetlands, which is a natural occurring just based upon the topography. And she was concerned that the, you know, the increase in gravel area would exacerbate the issue. So, we came up with a system of putting cobbles and boulders right along the edge of the parking lot and what that's gonna do, it's gonna stop any surface flows, slow them down, and instead of allowing it to concentrate, it'll diffuse them back out. And then, when we were going through this, there was the issue of pretreatment and the 154 feet, although this is all wooded back between the parking lot and the wetlands, it just doesn't meet the Connecticut requirement for pretreatment. We're like 30 feet short. So, what we ended up doing is we ended up putting in a swale right behind the boulders and cobbles. It's 250 feet long so that we get this entire parking lot, including the area, and that coming up to the actual winery building. And what that'll do is it'll attenuate flows. So, any runoff will hit the boulders, slow down, spread out, then come into this swale where again, it'll be allowed to slow down, infiltrate in, and then it'll just spill over and then gently flow through the woods on its way to the wetland. And all that time concentration of slowing things down increases infiltration rate and actually allows us to filter the water through the natural vegetation that's already there. So, it's kind of a low-tech solution, but it's an elegant solution. So, now we don't have to have drainage pipes or water separators and get into any kind of major regrading either on the subject property or Mr. Albert Ruggiero's property to the north. So, it's kind of it in a nutshell.
Chris and Ally?
Chris, you talked about the patio in the back section. When we were out there in November, it was pretty steep. Are you gonna change the topo out there on that in any way or are you gonna just leave it natural?
When you say change the topo, are you talking about the area beyond the parking lot or right where? Okay.
Right in the...
Okay. Right now, where the proposed patio is going is basically where they have all their chairs. If you've ever been out there, it's pretty flat. I don't think it's all too bad. Same where the patio is. They do have a ramp currently up to the building and that ramp will stay, but this addition is basically gonna be two stories. So, they'll be able to load into the lower level and then the first floor will match the elevation of the first floor of the winery, the production area, which is over here. So, it's gonna be like a two-story. So, they're gonna use the elevation to their advantage for storage underneath, production on basically the main floor. So, there's not gonna be really any major regrading along with that. We'll probably formalize a little bit on this ramp and get a little less steep and make it work because we are extending it out a little bit. So, that'll probably be about the only grading we do.
Okay, and the other question was, are the roof leaders run over the sheet, flow over the ground or they pipe somewhere?
I believe they discharge to grade. In fact, I don't even know if they have roof leaders on the building. I think that just the runoff from the roof just comes and hits grade. No gutters, no leaders at all. So, it's all just sheet flow.
Okay. Dave?
No questions at all.
Debbie?
No question.
Robert?
You mentioned a couple times about formalized parking. What do you mean by that?
Well, basically, one of the things that I know planning is gonna need, want us to do is to have, even though it's gravel, they're gonna wanna have designated line striping. And one of the things that we've come up with is in between the parking rows, we're actually gonna be using split rail fence. And we've already checked that we can do this is we're gonna have a post every nine feet. So, the posts themselves are gonna define where the parking spot is. And as a split rail fence, it'll fit in with the kind of farm nature of the operation.
So, it'll be gravel with the split rail fence defining the parking spots?
Correct. We'll also have to paint them.
Right.
As we all know, the paint's not gonna last on gravel very long, but at least the posts will be there and allowing them to be able to visually see where every parking spot is on the ground. And the nice thing is, in the winter, being nine feet wide, they can actually pull the rails out even though posts will be there and it won't interfere with them being able to plow or move snow or do maintenance because they'll be able to get a vehicle technically, you know, they'll be able to get a vehicle between those nine-foot posts.
Okay, and I have a second question. Right now, there's the driveway going in. What kind of material is that?
For the first part of the driveway, it will be paved.
Right, what is it now?
Right now, it's a combination of broken pavement, dirt, gravel, millings.
Which brings me to my question. Is that gonna be removed when you put the gravel, the actual gravel down?
We will basically, anything that can be reclaimed, any gravel, any millings that can be reclaimed and be reused, will reuse as a driveway base.
Okay, thanks.
But in this area, because it is in the watershed protection district, we cannot use millings. So, everything else will be gravel based.
That's all I had.
Erin?
Okay, the environmental planners report on this application went out in your packet on Thursday. Chris has gone over the basics. I guess what I wanna talk about is some outstanding information. Oh, we did get permission from 12, authorization from 12 Windswept Hill Road for some of these activities because the number of the activities are actually happening on that property. So, ideally, they would've been a co-applicant, but absent that, they did send in a letter endorsing all these improvements on their property or on the 15 Windswept Hill Road property proper. Okay, so that's good. I'm interested in drainage easement for all the increase in flows that's gonna travel north. Obviously, when you improve an area, there's gonna be increase in flows and they will travel north onto the 12 Windswept Hill Road property. Chris has talked about the border, borderline of boulders and cobbles along that edge, but then on the other side, on the 12 Windswept Hill Road property, there's going to be a grassed drainage swale that would sort of catch the water and hold it for a bit with very little pitch. I would like Chris to explain more. It's three feet wide and I asked, how does it drain? And he says it drains to the west. There's a slight pitch to the west on that. So, there should, I believe there should be a drainage easement and that can be handled as a condition of approval when we get to the conditions. The other thing was, there was a bit of a seep, seemed to be a groundwater seep or a seep coming out of the hill on the southwest side. When I was there last spring, just, it's not a big deal. We can handle it and we can, these stormwater flows can be handled. If it does continue to seep, it can be managed at that time. Chris doesn't believe there would be a seep there because they're gonna cut into the woods and remove a bit of that slope there and some of the forested area there. If it does seep, it can be handled at that time, maybe with a perpendicular drainage swale or something. I don't know how, we could be addressed at that time. Okay, so I recommend, I should say the comments. You got the copy of the comments that came in from the different departments. The water division was looking at it very closely because it's in the watershed, so they have their comments. Number one being that pervious materials be used, which they got. They didn't want millings, so they got their pervious. That was a change made to accommodate them. And no storage of hazardous, toxic, contaminated materials. And on no parking lots containing more than 10 spaces shall use sodium chloride for ice control. So, and they're satisfied with that. And of course, this goes for planning and zoning, so they get another crack at it there. And the other was comments from the electric division, but unless Chris disagrees, this these, this stuff wouldn't impact, they sent me like 15 pages of specifications of how they want the electric utility under the driveways handled with concrete and gravel and depth and all that stuff, but that, I think that can be accommodated. I think Chris can affirm that. So, the conditions of approval. I presented three. One was that a copy of the land records recording to be submitted to the environmental planner within one month of approval relative drainage easement for the 12 Windswept Hill Road property in favor of 15 Windswept Hill Road property regarding introduction of increased flows to travel from the improved parking area and drives located on the 15 Windswept Hill Road property onto the other property. Two, the conditions of the water division memorandum dated February 1st be met. Three, erosion control installation for the construction is to be inspected and approved by the environmental planner for adequacy of installation prior to any further work being conducted. Ground level cannot be obscured by snow for the inspection. So, the one thing, maybe to go over the grass drainage swale, like how that, how that's built or what it's made of and stuff.
Right. It's a grass line swale. As you said, three feet wide, it's about six inches deep and it is very flat. Again, the whole purpose is just to attenuate the flows so that we meet the 2002 Connecticut guidelines for pretreatment attenuation. I know Erin did mention the seepage in the southwest, but I just wanna point out, while we are cutting into the woods, all our activities are stopping prior to the slope. So, we shouldn't be cutting into the slope and creating an issue with the seepage. And with it being a gravel parking lot, if there is any seepage that does come out, it'll basically collect in the gravel parking lot and infiltrate in and be treated just like runoff. I don't see it being a significant issue whatsoever. Would feel, I'd feel completely different if we were cutting into the slope, but because we're pulling back here in the northeast section and then not even getting into the slope in the southwest section of the parking lot, I don't think we're going to have an issue with seepage for the parking lot at all. I definitely read through the three conditions that Erin suggested and as soon as we get through planning and zoning, as long as there's no, that's when we'll finalize the easement for you and we will get you a copy of what's recorded on the land records. That's not an issue. We will definitely comply with the water division comments and yes, erosion controls. When this gets started, I doubt there's gonna be any snow on the ground when they start construction. So, I don't think that'll be a problem and I'll make sure that you are notified for inspection before any work does occur.
Chris, let me ask you, on this swale, is this gonna be a mowable swale?
Yes.
So, it's gonna be maintained and mowed, short grass and all that?
Yeah, once, twice a year, just cut it down because of size, weed whacker, maybe a small lawn mower at most.
Well, is that a grassy area or on the other side of the wall?
It's woods. It's woods. As most of the commissioners who were there, as soon as you get from the parking lot, you're right into thick, good heavy vegetated wooded area from basically the edge of the parking lot all the way down to the wetlands.
I tried to make it, design it so it had to be able to mow with a mower, some sort of a mower.
Okay.
Rather than it defined three feet straight up, be a slope so it could be mowed because I think it's gonna function better if it stays mowed.
I totally agree. So, yeah, if we have to, you know, we already are, you know, significantly, the vegetation is significantly away because of the gravel parking lot area that we're pulling out. So, it's really just small area where we may have to clear to be able to get a tractor in there.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify something that Chris said. I wasn't concerned about seeps coming out from the eastern slope. The seeps I saw last spring were right next to the chicken coop, which is on the southwestern area. And if you look at the grading, there's, there's sort of a low point. You see that grading where it goes down? There's a crest in that area where the drainage comes along that ridge there. So, that was the area where you're gonna take out some trees. That was the area that I saw the seep.
Okay.
For some reason, I must've left this. All right, any other comments? Ally? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion regarding the significant activity, if this is a significant activity.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that Application A 19-1.1/15 Windswept Hill Road, Paradise Vineyard and Winery be deemed not a significant activity.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. I'll start with Bob this time. Bob? Debbie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that Application A 19-1.1, 15 Windswept Hill Road, Paradise Vineyard and Winery be approved. Oh, wait, be approved, subject to conditions laid out in the environmental planners memo of February 28th, 2009, which incorporates by reference a memo from the Department of Public Utilities and that's dated February 1st, 2019.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Bob?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Going on to item three, A 19-1.3, five research parkway, demolition of the building, of the buildings. That was already granted administration approval, but it was really subject to the fact that they got permits and approvals from planning and zoning and who else? Water and sewer. Correct?
You talked about five research parkway?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's all taken, that's taken care of. A 19-2.1, 23 Vitasik Drive, Joseph Vitasik, they, they received an after-the-fact tree removal permit. So, that's all set.
Oh, no, we have to act on it.
I thought...
That wasn't administrative.
Okay. What's the story?
Tree, it could be administrative. I mean, it was not actually in the wetland, it was on the edge of the wetlands.
Well, the tree is gone.
The tree is gone in the stream.
The tree is gone and he's, based on Erin's recommendation that he get a after-the-fact permit and that's what he did. He came in and applied for an after-the-fact permit. So, is there any reason not to give him approval? Is it gonna be administration approval, whichever way the commission would like to go? Dave?
Something like that, this appears to be so minor that this is something that I think you could do with administrative approval, so I think that's what we should do.
Debbie?
Yeah, I agree.
Bob?
I agree.
Ally?
Yeah, I'm cool with that.
Nick?
Okay.
Administration approval done.
Now, this is also, let me point out, Mr. Chairman, it's also down below under violation. So, when we get to that, you will remove, act to remove, you will vote to remove the violation.
Okay, now, new business is not on the agenda, but you passed out some new, or they're in the receipt of new applications.
Yes.
Okay. Application A 19-2.2, 14 Brookview Avenue, this is stream bank stabilization and there's an application for it, correct?
That went out in the packet last Thursday.
There it is. Okay, so there's, there's not really much to talk about at the moment?
No, I'll go out there like I do with all the applications. I'll go out during the next month and work out any things that need to be worked out, any erosion controls that need to be added or whatever, and then I write the report.
Okay, there's no, there's nobody here representing them tonight?
No, it's just a receipt. We're not presenting any of the new applications tonight. That wasn't planned.
All right. Okay, second is Application A 19-3.1, Fairfield Boulevard, Davenport Associates. This is, is this for an increase of paving?
Yes, increase in surfaced area.
I saw, Davenport has only been up on Fairfield Boulevard probably less than a year. I think it's a nice thing that Wallingford would somebody expanding their business and their need for expanded area. So, but this, you think there's any issues with this?
No, probably not. I haven't looked closely at it yet, just came in.
Okay. All right. A 19-3.2, 333 Tristan Street, Choak Rosemary, reconstruction of a soccer field. Want to give us a quick overview of this?
Yes, they're upgrading the soccer. It's an existing soccer field, it's grass today and it's kind of interesting because of all the rain we're having, they were sort of washed out this fall.
Was it washed out?
They were washed out by all the rain.
Soccer field was?
No, no, not literally. The games were washed out, they couldn't play their games and really messed with the schedule with a phenomenal amount of rain. We had record-breaking amount of rain this fall. So, they're going with a turf field. They bit the bullet and they're gonna put in turf with under drains and that's what this is about.
Okay. All right, then going on to the budget, this is a simple, we, Erin and I went over the budget quickly and basically, other than salaries, which we have no control over, our budget has stayed the same. Correct?
Correct.
So, nothing changed. Communications, Eversource is removing trees in the transmission line. There's not much we can do about that. DEP permit for Summer Hill Pond. Now, Erin, is this something they do every year? They use pesticides in the pond water up there?
Yes, and in fact, I got, I received two more, I'm gonna mention it now, two more DEP permit applications for use of pesticides. Today came in, one from for the Choak ponds and one for the Fieldstone Farm ponds and we get these every year. They come through every year.
Okay, now who gives you the permit? Who?
DEP issues the permit, but the applicator is required to send your commission a copy of it, notice of it.
So, you could have three different applicators.
Oh, yeah, we do. There are three different companies involved, but we, I have the chance to comment and the commission would have the chance to comment. Typically, we haven't commented. I did call once and had a long discussion with them about how these applications, year after year, and they're sort of rubber stamped by the DEP. How about looking at land use, you know? How about, they put fertilizer all on the grass around these water bodies and then... they apply these chemicals to the water. How about doing a little proactive land management, you know?
Okay. I have a free, designing green infrastructure for changing weather patterns, UConn, and associate wetland scientist meeting. Now, going into violations now. Notice one violation, 988 East Center Street, benchmark land development. What is the status with this, Aaron?
I haven't heard anything except today I got a message left from their attorney that they're meeting with the town planner next Tuesday. They've drawn up something, they have to make a lot of changes to the plan you saw in order to comply with the water division's watershed requirements for the future watershed, because that's, it's called Tyler Mill Preserve Watershed. It's designated as a future watershed, whether or not it'll ever become one, but it is so designated. So they have to meet a lot of those requirements.
Okay. What I, what I see going on here, this will be a year or two before they get that permit. So they can maintain this violation for that, that long. We, we've got to take, I think, a position here that, that you don't, you didn't have that area paved or it was not a driveway before. We want you to take the driveway out until you get ready to put the, to whatever you do. But there's no reason to have the driveway there. So if, I'd like to instruct you to send their attorney a note that we want the driveway out, we want the violation corrected, never mind about the whole plan for your project.
Would you like to vote on that?
Certainly. Do you understand what I'm saying, commissioners?
Yes.
That if we're not careful, this thing will just sit and sit, and meanwhile, the violation is in effect, constant, constant, constant. So my recommendation is sending the attorney a notice that we want the violation out immediately.
Would you want to put a time on that? I mean, they are going to be applying to planning and zoning within a month, that'd be...
But they, but that's fine, they can plan and zoning all they want. They don't need this turnaround.
Okay, so, oh, I get it, okay.
They didn't have this turnaround before, they put this turnaround in, and yeah, well, we're going to fix it by going to planning and zoning.
Okay.
But the turnaround could come out immediately.
Immediately with erosion controls involved.
Exactly. I mean, a bunch of things there.
How about, if you're going to pull it out, what are you going to put back?
Well, it can be, it can be the natural material that was there. It can be grass seed and hay bale, or hay on it, until they get ready to tear whatever they're doing down for the rest.
So restore with appropriate kind of grass seed, whatever is appropriate.
Didn't we request that they give us a scope, large scope, what they were going to do? You asked that the last meeting.
Well, this is, I think, as I recall, they decided that they better look at the overall parcel, that this little spot fix wasn't going to do it. And I believe from their design, they were moving the office towards the East Center Street side and reconstructing everything else. But now she just indicated that there's a lot more involved because of the water and sewer has got the designated future watershed area this drains into. So, you, let's see, what do we have, March, April, May? I would think you should be looking by May 1st, it should be out.
Okay.
Should be gotten back to its natural condition. So you want to vote on it? Is that, let's see, who makes the motion on it? Somebody want to make the motion?
Let me just try the motion before I make it. The motion will be for the, it's a benchmark land development, to remove the violation under the supervision of the environmental planner by May 1st, 2019.
I think that's fine.
That sounds like the motion. Okay. Mr. Chairman? I make a motion regarding notice of violation 988 East Center Street Benchmark Land Development and others, that they be directed by the director of environmental planning to remove the violation under the direction of the environmental planner.
By?
By, no, I said, oh, I'm sorry, by May 1st, 2019.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second. Can we add, you said remove the violation, can we be a little more specific on what they're removing?
Well, correct, no, but...
But what's the violation? Why do you want to be more specific?
The violation you found is the violation we want. I'm sorry.
Okay, so it's just on the benchmark property? We're not, we're leaving all the gravel fill on the railroad property?
No, no.
That's one thing. And then they're just removing the gravel, they're not restoring the wetland?
At this point.
At this point.
But whatever the violation is, whether whose property it is, benchmark is the, the person who created the violation. So whatever benchmark created, we want them to remove.
Okay, you do mean both the properties, where it spills over onto the other property?
Yeah, both, yeah. Motion made and second, any more discussion? Go this time with Ally?
No, good.
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Two, notice of violation 530 Church Street, Gomnary, staff report.
We're, he did, you know, he did about half the, more than half, maybe 60%. He's got a lot of work waiting for the spring, for the rest of the work, to restore the walls of the basin, to seed some areas that are eroding. We got to wait till the spring for that.
Okay, so, so that violation stays in effect?
Yes, if you could vote that it remains. The law department likes us to vote that it remains in effect.
Good. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that notice of violation IWWC A 16-2.1, 530 Church Street, erosion and non-compliance issues remain in effect.
Second?
Second.
Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes. Number three, notice of violation 52 Hanover Street, Quinnipiac River, forest removal.
Is anyone here for that today? No? Okay. All right, well, I've been working with the resident of 52 Hanover Street, Frank Vitale, the Southwest Conservation District, which is Roman Rosinski. You got a copy of his report in your packet, I believe, or that might have been the previous month, I can't remember actually. And the violation was issued on January 28th, and we've been working since then on this and the contractor, it hasn't gone as smoothly as I would have liked, largely due to weather. Every time the contractor schedules to go out there, we either get a rainstorm or we get a snowstorm. So it kind of has progressed in, in hots. What he did do is he, about three weeks ago, built a berm at the top of the slope, as he was instructed to do by the Southwest Conservation District, because the water was just careening over the slope. So now there's this berm, dirt berm up there, so that's good. What he intends to do Thursday and Friday is to go down and haul those trees out of the river, that were just cast into the river, get those out of there, and start, and start stabilizing them. They're going to be used to stabilize that edge of the bank. And I said that, I instructed him to put hay bales along, again, once again, it's getting a little frustrating, along the top of the riverbank, because that snow is melting and under there the rivulets are happening, even if you can't see it, when the sun gets hot, it's bringing some of that soil material down. So he agreed to do that, to put that, that row of hay bales at the base at the top of the riverbank, rather than waiting till it all melted and then putting, he wanted to wait till it all melted and put it across the middle of the whole slope. We've got to catch it before it goes into the river. So that's where we are now. It's been impeded by the weather.
Yeah.
Ideally, it would have all happened before the snow came. That was our intent. The Quinnipiac River Waters, the Quinnipiac River Water Association Board has agreed, as I reported at the last meeting, to provide some funds, because there's going to be a lot of replanting that needs to be done to restore that bank, so.
You were successful in getting a good article in the paper regarding the regulations of clearcutting within 50 feet of a wetland.
Concerning this, the one about this property?
Yes.
Yeah, I actually didn't initiate that, the reporter initiated that, but...
It's too bad it was a month ago, but why did he initiate it at this point?
She, the reporter?
Yeah.
At the last meeting, she spent the entire meeting in the front row here and has become very involved with local events, so.
Okay. So again, we got, you want us to vote that that remains a violation?
Oh, yes, um, yes, and we, yes, that'd be a good idea, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that notice of violation 52 Hanover Street slash Quinnipiac River, Mary Jane Legasi et al., remain in effect.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Would Bob decide?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, number four, notice of violation, which is now removed, there's no, no violation because there's been a permit.
So if you could vote that the notice of violation has been...
Has been satisfied with, by a permit.
Is removed, is, no longer, it remains in effect.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that notice of violation 23 Vitasic Drive, Joseph Vitasic, is no longer in effect.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. Bob?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes. All set. Okay, anything else to come before us tonight?
No.
I just have one thing, Aaron. You put in the minutes, you were going to check to see about five research, that the materials were going to be stockpiled and used for grading and leveling, are they going to be removed off the site?
Oh, I'm sorry, did not do that. We don't, if I may point out, we don't have an application in front, no, there is no development application right now.
But that's what he's asking you, though.
There's, well, there's, no, there's a demolition.
Yeah. And what are they going to do with the spoils for demolition?
Oh, for the demolition.
Right?
I actually, I forgot to pursue that. I believe they're being taken off site, but I'm not sure, that's, I'm sorry, I did not pursue that.
Okay.
I will, I could let you know as soon as I find out. We don't have to wait till the next meeting. Yep.
I, I thought they were going to stay on site and be used part of the material, it's all masonry material, going to use it on material as part of the fill for the, for the base.
My only concern was, Aaron, that they're going to use it for fill material on site, that the soil erosion control has doubled or tripled because of the fines that are going to be there. You've got coarse concrete that's going to be crushed to powder and fine granular materials and it, when the water hits it, it's going to take it and push it wherever it wants to. So you were going to check to see if that was the case, then my address was going to be to beef up the S and E controls around these piles so that they weren't sitting down on Route 68 on a rainstorm, or sitting down in that little pond in the front. That was my reasoning for having you check to see what was going to actually happen.
Okay, we, actually, Tuesday, we were supposed to go out and, me and the other departments were supposed to go out and check the erosion controls and give the go ahead. With the foot of snow, that got canceled, so that visit hasn't occurred, but I will look into this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that this may be adjourned.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nope. Tough luck.